P M. Everyone is socially distanced very well here this evening. Some people are out of my line of vision. Everybody's here and doing well so far. Hopefully it'll continue that way. First thing we're going to do tonight is we're going to deal with the statutory meeting, required session on the tax levy for 2020-2021, the tax levy order. So that's been out on public comment. And so tonight, I don't guess Mr. McKit or Mr. Ellis, have we received any comments through our knowledge?
No comments.
Okay. So there haven't been any. As was explained to us at our original session, these tax rates are set. And essentially what we're doing is just approving the rates that are already established, in other words, wasn't something that we had developed ourselves. So that being said, I'd like to have a motion please to approve the tax levy order.
So moved.
Mr. Wilkinson?
Second.
Second by Mr. Baker. Is that an all yes vote to do that?
Yes.
Okay. So approval of the levy order is presented and approved by the State Audit for West Virginia in accordance with provisions of Chapter 11, Article 8 of the West Virginia Code as amended. And that was an all yes vote?
Yes.
All yes, okay. Okay, this time then, let's adjourn this statutory meeting. Okay, have a motion to do that, please.
Second.
Mr. Curry made the motion. And Mr. Baker seconded that one. Is that an all yes vote?
Yes.
Okay, and so at 6:03 P M., that meeting will adjourn. And glad Mr. Baker fixed that clock and looked up to his confidence in his faculty. I want to be saying 5:03.
It's closer than it was before.
You're good. We're a little worried about your health, but everything else is good.
Are you still agile?
That's right. Well, okay.
And rock.
Okay. What I'd like to do now then is call and order the regular session for Tuesday, April 21st, 2020, at 6:04 P M., let's say. Okay. Now, approved in the minutes of the March 31st, 2020, regular meeting, please. Motion?
So moved.
So moved. And Larry seconded that. Is that an all yes vote?
Yes.
Okay. We didn't have anyone sign into the address of the board this evening, so there aren't any public comments. Mr. McKit doesn't have any presentation reports on the agenda. So we'll move into the administrative section. If I have a motion, do those, please.
No motion.
Okay, Fred made that motion.
Second.
Seconded by Larry. Mr. McKit?
Okay, item A, out of state travel for beyond Lucas to Las Vegas, Nevada, July 5th through the 11th, 2020, to attend the Staff Development for Educators National Conference on Differentiated Instruction and Literacy, funded through the Literacy Grant. And as far as we know, that conference is still to go and has not been canceled, unlike most others. Item B is approval of the 2020-2021 school calendar as recommended by the Calendarian Calendar Committee. And since we've had our last public calendar meeting on March the 3rd, the only comments, the only information I had received was two letters from Hamlin faculty and DuVall's faculty asking the board to consider the use of snow packets for next school year. That's the only comments, any information that I've received since that thing.
Okay. Then when you originally put this out, there were various comments we received.
I have those here.
Okay, you have those somewhere. We had letter and in addition, we had some oral presentations or comments.
Right.
Okay.
And the deadline to submit the calendar has been moved to June 1st as a result of what's going on with the school. But we're going to go ahead, if the board approves the calendar tonight, we'll go ahead and submit it this week to the State Department for approval. Item C is approval of a salary upgrade according to House Bill 206, West Virginia Code 18A-4-2, D N E, for the following employee, Patricia Rajite, who is now a fully certified special education teacher, teaching special education a minimum of 60% of the school day. She's now eligible for the $1,500 supplement for her salary. Item D, adoption of policy 5421 on grading, been on public review for the last 30 days, would now enable us to wait dual credit classes at Lincoln County High School. Actually requires that we do so. Item E, annual certification of pay for our J R O T C instructors at Lincoln County High School for the 2020-2021 school year, which is attached. And the agreement is the same as it has been in the past. There's no changes there in the contract.
Do you want to have any questions about any of those things? Okay. If there aren't any, then is that an all yes on the administrative items that's presented?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Okay. Let's go to the finance section then, please. Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Baker and Mr. Wilkinson. Ray?
Item A, schedule of invoices to $628,343.4 and four cents, listing is attached. As always, if you have any questions, let me know. Membership in the West Virginia School Board Association for fiscal year 21 and payment of $3,751.
Did we not determine that that's the same fee that we had paid last year?
It's the same amount, yeah.
Okay. Anything else, Ray, in the finance round we need to be aware of at this time?
You know, I always check through the levies and how much money's coming in. And we're still, some months are better than others, but we're still way down from last year and the year before. And if you go back about five or six years, at this point, we're down close to a million dollars.
Well, everything's so up in the air now, I guess we just have to wait till the best of the two or three. Okay, but we have two items in on the finance section. Is that an all yes on those items?
Yes.
All yes there. Okay, personnel section, have a motion?
No motion.
Mr. Curry and Mr. Baker.
Item A, transfer of professional personnel. Item B is transfer of service personnel. Item C, employment of short and long-term substitute professional personnel for school year 2021, retired folks. Item D, employment of short and long-term substitute professional personnel for school year 2021 that are certified. Item E, employment of short and long-term substitute professional personnel for the school year 2021, those are long and short-term subs that are on permit. Item F, employment of short and long-term substitute professional personnel pending renewal of certification for school year 2021, these are long and short-term subs on permit. Item G, employment of professional personnel to be issued continuing contract pending renewal of certification for school year 2021. Item H, employment of professional personnel to be issued continuing contract for school year 2021. Item I, employment of professional personnel to be issued probationary contract pending renewal of certification for school year 2021. Item J, employment of professional personnel to be issued probationary contract for school year 2021. Gentlemen, there is a correction in the second column, third name down, Jessica Roberts. Behind her name should be the words Ranger Elementary K6 and not itinerant music. She is an elementary K6 teacher at Ranger. Item K, employment of service personnel to be issued a probationary contract for the school year 2021. Item L, employment of service personnel to be issued a continuing contract for school year 2021. Item M, employment of substitute service personnel for school year 2021. Item N, transfer of professional and service personnel for school year 2021 per West Virginia Code 18A-2-7. Item O, termination of professional personnel for school year 2019-20 per school, per West Virginia Code, excuse me, 18A-2-2. Item P, termination of service personnel per West Virginia Code 18A-2-6 to be placed on a preferred recall list. Item Q, termination of extracurricular contracts, athletic, professional, and service. There are two corrections. On the very next page, if you'll look with me about quarter of the way down the page to the name Steve Jeffers. Steve Jeffers is an after-school bus operator. He also has the duty of ALC breakfast and lunch. So please put ALC breakfast lunch by Steve Jeffers. And if you'll turn to the next page, please, you'll start at the bottom and go about a third of the way up, you'll see the name Lisa Thompson. Lisa Thompson, after her name, has bus operator, ALC breakfast and lunch. Please strike that. She just has, she is the operator driver for CTE PK. Moving on, item R, abolish the following professional personnel positions. Item S, abolish the following service personnel positions. Item T, employment of professional personnel for school year 2021.
Any question?
Any questions?
But so does this pretty well take us to everything that needs to be done on a timely basis as of now?
We make every effort to ensure the accuracy of the information in this particular personnel schedule. And I'm sure we'll probably find out that we've left someone out or, you know, that's why we do it early, because we do have another opportunity, another board meeting coming up to make corrections.
Am I a premature candidate?
Someone will, yeah.
That's how we had these corrections.
And I guess Kirk, you kind of breathe a sigh of relief when this is, well, when it's all completed for sure.
We'll start breathing in May 6th.
Okay, that relates to my question. Now that all this has happened, where are we on the posting of future vacancies?
You'll go ahead and answer that question.
We'll, we have been instructed to stay, stay the course and post as if it were a normal school year. So we will, again, May, in early May, we'll post for those vacancies and see what happens.
So all the positions we've been holding?
That's one of the.
Yes.
We thought there would be vacancies for next year after May the 1st. So there'll be a large posting, go wow, the first weekend left.
Yeah, because I've got a few questions about when we're going to do that.
I'm sure you have.
But all of this had to occur, or some of this anyway had to occur, not all.
The majority of this had to occur to get us ready for that posting.
Okay. Do you might have any other questions in particular regarding the personnel schedule? All right, then, we'll get back to the front here again. So we had a motion seconded, maybe Mr. King's gone over all of these. We had three corrections, everybody should have noted those. And with those corrections, is that an all yes vote?
Yes.
All right. Comments concerned, board members? Mr. McKit?
I heard several.
You're back to that part?
Yes. We'll start with graduation. As you all know, the governor officially closed schools today for the remainder of the school year, which provides some relief for us in the school systems in terms of we've been working from two different sets of plans. We've been planning for the possibility that our students would return and planning for the possibility that would not happen. So it's been challenging at times to be able to work in both of those guidelines. But so with his announcement today, if you listen to him, he talked about the importance of doing all that we can as local school systems and boards to have a graduation ceremony for our seniors and meaningful, you know, something that the students, you know, they've been in the system for 15 years, they look forward to. I don't like to tell you how important it is. Mr. King and I and some others here at the office have been working with the administration at the high school in turn, been talking to teachers, parents, senior students, some community members about postponing and rescheduling graduation. And I have a date, I'll share with you this evening and see if it works for you all, if it's okay with you, of moving graduation to Friday, June 26th, in hopes that the social distancing guidelines that we're under right now, by that time will be relaxed to the point that we could have a traditional ceremony. But that may not happen.
Yeah.
But that's where we're going, being optimistic.
Well, if they aren't, do we still have, doing a socially distanced manner?
Well, we've talked about, we've had, we've had several conversations that we would attempt to do this outside. Certainly we could space the students out on the field. We may, depending upon what those guidelines may look at, if social distancing is still a concern, and of course, we'd have to work with the local health department with whatever we do, that maybe limit the number of guests that each one of the students could bring or invite to two each. And so this information's been shared with some of the students. And they'll communicate after tonight, and I get back with the administration at the high school, they will further communicate with students and parents. But I just wanted to share that with you and get your thoughts, your feedback. Some counties are, they're even looking at July and August already for dates for graduations.
So you're, the date is really what you're seeking right now, even though the procedure could change?
We've talked about a virtual graduation, and I think Jostens is, they've got something that's company we use for caps and gowns and.
Graduation invitations.
Graduation invitations. You know, it's possible we may get to that point that we may have to look at something a long way behind, someone really wants to do that. It's my understanding that the students that the administration and teachers have been talking to, they're not crazy about that idea either.
They want a graduation.
And I think that's, we need to make every effort.
Okay, let's assume that the social distancing is still in effect, we want to have a regular graduation. One positive thing is that it is outside, but so they would be spaced apart. I guess I'm just trying to visualize this. I'm not really sure how they get their diplomas.
We don't have a stage. We sit at ground level and there's a podium out in front of us. And as you announce the name of the next graduate, the superintendent or someone laser to phone on the podium, it's just back six feet.
Okay. Okay, well, I'm just sending that quick.
And what Kirk and I was talking too about, you know, because you all know how we set up for graduation on the field and how we can, we could really space that area out, spread that area out for the students where they would be sitting. And the bleachers, you've got two sets of bleachers on each side of the graduates, plus the large set of bleachers, the grandstand, that, you know, you could go through and if social distancing was still at play, and let's say that just two guests could be invited for graduate, you know, you could mark off, you could X at the spot for two people to sit and then six feet over here, you know.
Why couldn't we do that in May? What would prevent us from doing that on the currently scheduled graduation date?
We were encouraged that because schools are closed and they don't, they've canceled all activities, like even athletics is now canceled. I don't know if you all have heard this or not. It was mentioned on our phone call with superintendents today that those activities have now, no state basketball tournament, no spring sports. They're even moving the three-week window.
For training.
From June into July now. And that may not happen. So it's the social distancing, they don't, you know, that we're not going to be, don't anticipate.
But if we could compile the socially, social distancing mandates, as you just said, we could by using more of the field, limiting the number of guests, because my concern is, what percentage of our students from MHS are going to go to college versus going to get a job when they get that diploma?
We talked about that.
So, you know, if we have people that are working or people that have gone away or people that have gone in the military, they're going to miss the graduation ceremony potentially at the end of June. We'll have people that are on vacation, then scheduled vacations if a beach is open somewhere. I mean, my thought is, the seniors' lives have been so disrupted already through no fault of their own, that if we could comply with now existing social distancing mandates and give them their graduation when it was scheduled, that would mean a lot to them, even if the parameters of the graduation looked nothing like it would but for this.
But you're, aren't you still limping the number of people? Well, right. We're still under a state order mandate as well. No one knows when that's going to be lifted. And then when we do start to bring things back to normal, you know, it's going to be in phases. And based upon what we heard today in our discussion that we had with the state superintendent, you know, the guidance was really you need to be looking at dates in the summer, like the expectation that we're not going to be able to have a traditional graduation in May. Maybe they know more than.
In the best case scenario, what was shared today, that phase two, which would allow us to have this type of a ceremony, would not be even close until June 20th.
This is a phase two, the way.
This is just anticipating that the governor at some point in early May, I think he may have even said Monday, I didn't, I didn't catch all of his press conference, but something about starting, kind of starting things back up, May the 4th. So again, you know, we're, what we were told today is that with that, students would not be returning to school. There wouldn't be any activities on board property at the school. And it wouldn't be until we get into this phase two.
I think it's, I think it's an introduction to phase two, which is at the earliest, based on current date, would be June 20th.
So they, we were encouraged to look at dates out beyond that time. So Kirk, I'm glad you mentioned that, that date, June 20th, because that'd sit in my mind, so.
Okay, but Rowdy, just one thing that he said regardless, that they have, there are going to be some students that aren't going to be there. Now, should those students want to get their diploma?
We'd make arrangements.
They will be advised somehow, that they could do that? Do we know if they're already on hand?
We do not have the diplomas right now. That's something we're working on.
Here's a suggestion, something to think about. We have a little over a month. This really is about only the kids. It's about only the senior class. I think we should let the senior class decide if that's a date that's good for them and give them some options as to maybe smaller ceremonies with smaller groups of people that can't attend on that date, so they can formally receive a diploma and go through the graduation process. I mean, right now, you're not supposed to congregate in groups smaller, larger than 10, right? But I think every kid should have the opportunity to have a diploma presented to them in a, some form of graduation ceremony, be it you handing them a diploma, just you and that person and their parents in your office, or in this room or something. I don't think any kid should miss out on that opportunity because we can't, we don't reasonably think we can do this until the end of June. I think the vast majority of kids will be able to do it then, but I think there'll be some that will miss, and it might be those that have no choice but to go straight to work or straight into the military or something. Those are the ones that, you know, graduation is maybe more to them than a lot of kids can come.
Well, I'd love to see the logistics of all that's.
And no matter what we do, we're going to have to involve the local and state health departments.
Right.
We're definitely going to be.
Could they somehow at least get the input of the seniors somehow, or if they would be agreeable, or if they have any thoughts about that?
I told Mr. Mathis that I would call him in the morning after our discussion tonight, that kind of set that as a soft date, a tentative date at the moment, I guess.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with the date or the process. I just have a problem with the kids are going to be left out because of the timing.
I like your idea though, and I actually, I had a parent ask me something similar to what you just mentioned recently, about the possibility that their child, if there was a graduation later in the summer, not being able to attend, would I be willing to handle the diploma, you know, present your diploma here?
Yeah.
And I said I'd be more than happy to do so.
Will you give your thoughts on social distancing?
Also important too, is senior awards night. We recognize our students' achievements, our students have received scholarships, CTE completers, certifications, as well as other students and their activities. You know, we've always held senior night the week of graduations, so that's been a Tuesday, a Tuesday night event, graduation been on Friday. So we've also talked about the possibility of having a traditional night where we would recognize our students and their achievements for the year.
Would that also be outdoors? Because you couldn't, you know, you couldn't have the social distancing in the gym.
So that was, that's been discussed as well. And it's something that we're being encouraged by the State Department and the State Board to do everything that we can to be able to have that activity as well.
So has anyone thought about how warm and miserable it's going to be at the end of June?
Yes, we have.
I mean, we've had lots of, in certain years past, we've had issues with, you know, people being on the verge of being overtaken by the heat at the end of May. It's only going to be way worse at the end of June, so that's something we need to think about.
At the evening though, the ones where we really had a problem were in the mornings. You know, we started at 10:00, noon, the sun's.
Well, we talked to Mr. Mathis today, that maybe we could do something real late in the evening, like maybe 7:00, 7:30, under the lights even.
Yeah, I think we need to think about that.
Doesn't the, does the health department have an input into that also?
They will, yeah, they certainly will.
Regardless, they'll have to.
We were instructed also that Dr. Schlemm, I think is the name, would be working with all local health departments to make sure that we were kind of on board, so that we were protecting across the state these activities.
I may not have heard this correctly, but I believe I heard Mr. Birch say today that the State Department of Education has a task force that is working on all of these issues, that will be working on all of these issues. Maybe we could just wait for their brilliant guidance with them, try all these things.
We can look for their input.
We have surveyed, superintendents have been provided with a survey. It goes 14 questions, I know we've been asked. We're talking about some of those, you know, concerns right now that we are to submit tomorrow. They're going to compile all that information from all 55 superintendents as task force to come up with some ideas, best idea suggestions about moving forward with graduation, with senior night. Another issue is going to be collecting instructional materials, uniforms, anything that those seniors may have, you know, and all an effort to schedule and bring those students in and gather those items. So there's a lot, there's a lot more to this.
And tomorrow, they want you to share?
Yeah, I would have liked to. I had it today, and Kirk did.
Oh, yeah, they were pushing.
I mean, the governor makes the announcement, and the next thing I know is, you know, they want, they want to know when it, because they want to post, they want to post these dates on the state website, you know? And maybe they're getting, I'm just assuming that they're getting lots of questions, maybe from parents out there, wanting to know what's going on.
They ought to, you know, give you a little leeway, the governor just announced it.
So the survey was originally due at 4:00 tomorrow, but now they're asking us to submit it in the morning. That, there'll be a follow-up survey of six more questions. That, there'll be a follow-up survey of six more questions, I don't know what to, to anticipate, that we'll receive tomorrow afternoon. So I, I'm, I'm sure that next week when we meet, we'll still be talking about it. But I'll get with Mr., Mr. King and I'll get with Mr. Mathis tomorrow. We'll, we'll make sure that he, the school's communicating with the seniors, and you're right, Rowdy, it's, that's, you know, that's their night, that's their activity, and they've worked all these years for.
Were the date, be the original date on the diploma, do you think?
No, I, I think the date will be.
Oh, you could change it to.
Yeah, because we don't, yeah, we don't have the diplomas yet. We're, we're getting kind of hold it, waiting to see what was gonna happen. Because our original plan was if the government was gonna bring students back, then we were gonna stick with our, try to keep it with our May twenty-second graduation date.
I didn't know who fixed the date to the diploma.
So we're there, I think there are approximately close to two hundred students in this class who may, may graduate. It's, it's around a large group. Let me see if I've got anything else about that on here. Of course, we, um, we're continuing with remote distance learning. And I think Kirk and I've talked about this, you know, what's happened is really gonna have a lasting impact on education and teaching and learning, what it looks like. And there's definitely, what we've learned from this is that, you know, we have what, over a thousand students in our county without internet access.
Yes.
So, you know, we have thirty-three hundred students, third, almost a third of them, without internet access. And if they have internet access, they may not have a device. So I, I, I think, you know, we're gonna see an effort undertaken, not just at the state level, but at local county level, uh, moving to one-to-one devices for those students that do have the internet, that we could provide them with an iPad or laptop, that they can take home. And at, at the same time, and I may have mentioned this to a couple of board members, I think Larry, I talked to you about this, about setting up hotspots, Wi-Fi hotspots, and it may be on board property even, something that we can control, uh, maybe even be able to turn it on and off, like it's, it's available during the day, if time allows. We're, we're working, we're having some conversation right now with, with some folks from A and P and with Armstrong, in hopes that we can get, get this off the ground. And I, and I'll be providing much greater detail in the next few weeks, but I don't wanna jump headlong into this, because it's, we're just kind of in the infancy of our conversations, but there's definitely, this is, this has shown us that there's a great need for our students to be able to have devices and internet access, to be able to work. Some counties are there already, you know, Cavill County, Canol County, Raleigh County, those counties are all one-to-one. And, and something that may help us, and Kirk, you jumped in there anyway. With this CARES Act, this, all this additional funding that states are receiving, we found out Monday, no, no, Friday, we had a chief instructional leaders meeting Friday afternoon. We're gonna get an additional round of funding, it's gonna come through federal programs, that's eighty-five percent.
Eighty-five percent of our item one allocation this year.
Of what we received this year, in like in the, in the next few weeks, which, it's gonna be around a million dollars. In addition to the title one funding that we already currently, we already currently have, plus we're gonna get next fall, the FY twenty-one federal programs funded, which is one point three or four.
One point three five.
Million dollars.
Are there any stipulations with this new money?
We found out today that there's one. Now, I, Angie, you know, we've been, we've been talking about being able to purchase and provide devices, uh, starting with the high school and working our way down to middle school, and maybe even down into fourth grade. This may be an opportunity, this may be.
You're not down to June thirtieth or anything as far as you know?
We, as a matter of fact, we now have the deadline to spend to, like for the, for this year's money, as, instead of it being September thirtieth of twenty,
Yeah.
it's now gonna be September thirtieth of twenty-one.
This year's month.
So wherever things been pushed, all the deadlines to spend, to have the money expended, has been pushed down the road another year.
Even the nineteen money, the old money that was supposed to be expended.
Liquidated the other day.
It, it, it's getting pushed out.
It's more than that, no.
So, we know, we don't. We don't have the date, we don't have all the details, you know, what we know has just been, what's shared with is verbally, we haven't seen anything in writing yet, but, uh, it sounds like it's gonna be a windfall.
And this, this, this CARES money, Mr. Mick have mentioned, no stipulations, it doesn't go to Title One schools, it's used how, to best meet the needs of the students. And there's no supplement, supply issues, all of that stuff is waived. Additionally, even with the, with the current federal money, uh, they're, they're talking about waiving some of that, you know, fifteen percent of your Title Two or Title Four, that you only could spend fifteen percent on technology, there's, there's been conversation that that be waived as well. So, until we see it in writing, we are giving you information off of, off of verbal announcements.
Does it look like we could have this in line for secondary students next term?
Possibly.
Okay.
I mean, if there's no guideline, if it's true that there are no stipulations on how you spend that money, that'd be perfect use for us to, to move in that direction.
Yeah, but even if you go the route of what you call a one-to-one with a laptop or an iPad for most students, do you have the instructional materials downloaded to that device? Because if they don't have internet access, you still can't get and communicate with them. So is this thought of, of the evolution of technology, does that include internet access, local internet access for these people that don't have it, because what comes to my mind is a thousand or so students that don't have it now, probably don't have it because they can't financially afford it. If they can't financially afford internet, they're probably not gonna be able to have a car to drive out to the hotspots we talked about. So having all this technology in hand is great, unless you have the means to communicate from point A to point B electronically, doesn't do any good.
Our textbooks, um, over the last ten or fifteen years, they're also kind of electronically, and those textbooks could be downloaded onto those devices. So we're, me and one of the students would have, you know, electronic version of the textbook, um, that they can use, that's on their, on their device.
Maybe this task force, that might be one of their undertakings, because we aren't the only county that has that issue, obviously.
Right, and that was mentioned on the phone call today, I mean, this is something I think, we're probably gonna see some money from the state coming down, you know, some point down the road to tackle this issue. Because it's, you know, it's unfair to those students out there that don't have.
It's really brought the issue to the forefront, really.
It has, it has. So that'll be a good thing, it's an outcome, I think, uh, at the end of the day, when this, when this is passed us. But we don't wanna forget prom, uh, prom has, has been postponed as well, it's not being canceled. And talking to the administration at the high school, they're looking at two dates in June, and this is not nailed down, but they're looking at, uh, June the thirteenth and June the twentieth. I'm assuming those are Saturdays.
Well, am I thinking, I heard the date that it was, the prom were canceled.
They're not.
In this, in the press conference today.
Now, there may, some counties have canceled the prom, but not every county, and he may have mentioned that.
Well, I may have misunderstood, but I thought that was stated, that the graduations, you know, they were urged, you know, everyone to have graduation, but there would not be prom, but I may have.
How do you have a prom, and, but you know, I'm all for the kids having a prom, having already bought half a dress for a prom this year.
Only if social distancing guidelines have been.
But what we're hearing is they're not gonna be changed until phase two, which is not likely to take place until June twentieth, if then. So to set it on June thirteenth would be very preemptive and taking a big chance. Because I don't, you, you can't have a prom and practice, you know, six foot social distancing.
It's probably not gonna happen, but I, they're, again, they're being optimistic, and I think the students are, you know, the teachers, you know, talking to the teachers, parents talking to teachers, administration about trying to hang on.
I mean, wouldn't it be more realistic to look at dates after? I mean, I, I know you'd like to have prom before you have graduation, but in this scenario, best information is there may be some loosening of the restrictions by June twentieth, which would permit you to have a prom.
Kirk, when we met with the administrators, didn't Mrs. McCallum mention that there is a, a prom scheduled for July the eighteenth?
There, there was some talk of, of even a later in July date, and, and I can't remember.
But it'd be more like an, uh, an area-wide.
Yes.
I didn't really fully understand it, but she said that someone is going to put on this big prom at the, uh.
Big Sandy.
Big Sandy, or whatever it's called.
Now, it's the healthcare system place.
Dotty, Dotty and everybody would show up, not just anybody.
Because that's what they were, that's what the administration was telling us, is if, if we can't, if it can't happen in June, then that probably would be, the student's only opportunity would be.
Good gosh, we don't, we don't wanna send our students to, you know, in, in, into an environment with, you know, eight thousand kids, I mean, that's, that's nutty.
Especially out of county.
Who came up with that idea?
We're building a wall.
I don't remember, she told, do you remember?
I've seen something about it.
She, she mentioned, but I, I, when, when, when she said that the students were not interested in that, I just.
Yeah, thank God.
I just shut it down.
I can remember.
I quit listening, to be perfectly honest.
Have to be outside, maybe it could be enough Marshall football stadium.
So anyway, that's kind of where we are.
I don't think our kids would like that.
I mean, I, I couldn't, I couldn't.
Somebody's riding the back.
You'd have to. I will.
I know so much to all this, uh, remote learning, I'm gonna ask Kirk to talk about what we're doing, and how we're reaching kids that maybe don't have internet, and so, if you want to, can you talk about that?
The department has provided guidance on remote learning, um, this is the most current, uh, edition of that. It gets updated every Friday, um, and what we're doing, uh, we have asked our principals to give us a teacher from each grade level, and we have devised teams for each grade level, and those teachers have developed, since before spring break, developed a common engagement packet that all of our students in Lincoln County will receive. So all second graders will receive the same engagement packet. Uh, and we did that because we realized very quickly via phone calls and Facebook posts and this, that, the other, that some schools were going above and beyond and overextending, and some schools were taking it way easy. And with, there was just such a variation that we, as a curriculum team, were, were discussing, and I passed it to Mr. Mickiff, and he said, yeah, it sounds like a good idea, so now we have a common engagement package, and we will start mass producing those tomorrow morning here. All of the elementary are ready to go to press, and what we will do is, the students have an opportunity to do a, a digital track or a non-digital track. So for those students who do not have technology, what we're going to do right now, unless we get told by the health department, we're gonna do just like we do our food. We've got a van here in the county, we're gonna, we're gonna make these packets, and then we'll go into the attendance, different places in the attendance areas, we will notify those attendance areas, we will be there for a certain amount of time, and folks will have to come to us, to a degree, to get those paper packets. But it's every, it doesn't matter if you're in Harts or Midway, if you're a second, third, whatever grade you're in, you're gonna get the same packet across the board. And that's gonna help us, what we feel like moving forward as we re-enter, this is gonna give us an opportunity to, to align our curriculum, because as Mr. Mickiff said earlier, the way we teach is gonna be different, and as, as much as we can keep our kids together and, and instruct them, the better off we're gonna be. And this is, this is gonna, this is an effort to, how to make, uh, eliminate out of some limits right now, so that's what we're doing.
Now, these things. How are you gonna, what are you gonna do about the kids that don't come pick them up?
We, that, you can't push a chain, uh, we, but all we can do is make the effort to get out there, Mr. Curry, and I, and I understand that, and we have, we have social workers who, and, and others who are volunteering right now, who are, I just, just received a text that we have a volunteer that just delivered a food box out to a family that didn't, couldn't get it. And we've got people in our communities doing that, so when they are doing those food deliveries, we'll do the packets the same way. We're not gonna, unfortunate, we're not gonna be able to reach every child.
And we're not.
But we're gonna make an, an effort to do that.
And we're not covering new material, we're trying to just kind of keep them, you know, sharp as far as what they've covered at this point in the school year, and, and any work that they do is just value added to the grade they had, like we talked earlier on March thirteenth.
Yeah.
The grade can't go down, it can only go up.
Certainly go up.
But they, they aren't returning this, are they? The packet that they get.
They're not, they're not being returned.
At this point, we, we aren't collecting, a lot of what, what a lot of, uh, folks are doing is taking pictures on their phones and sending the, the work via phone to their teacher. Uh, we have a video out, uh, Mr. McCormick has put out on, on our Facebook, and I know not everybody has it, but there are a lot of people using it, you can use your cellphone to scan your, your work and send it to your teacher. The packets, we, that's, that's still another discussion. And, and in, in regards to the materials that are covered, come, most of it comes from the guidance of, of this document, because there, there are tons and tons of resources listed in this guidance document, and we've been, that's what we've been encouraged and instructed to do from the department, is all these resources in here, and the folks have been using these resources, we've been pushing them back to those resources. However, we are using the, still using the same platform to deliver that, if, uh, Midway's using, uh, Class Dojo, and somebody else is using Schoolology, West Hamlin's using Schoolology as a platform, we're still letting them use the same platforms that are familiar with the students, but we're using a, a common packet now, so that, that these, these resource, or these, the information is the same.
And is that, does this apply to middle school?
It, from pre-K to twelve.
Okay, so there'll be a packet for middle school.
There will be a packet for middle school, and Sean, unfortunately, we, uh, because of food being delivered today, we were supposed to have a team meeting with our middle and high school teams to have that discussion, so that will take place tomorrow, so we're just a little bit, we're a little bit behind on the middle and high school, but the elementary will, will get these packets, and hopefully by Thursday, the bins will be here, we'll, we're gonna put them in a, put them in the van by grade level, and if that, if it needs to be me, I'll mask up and drive out and pass out packets, that's what we're gonna do.
That's the same thing, the, the middle school packet for Hamlin will be the same as the middle school packet for DePaul or.
Yes, sir, it will be consistent across the board. And really, that's where we saw the difference, was the middle schools. So, uh, but it's, it's been a real interesting effort, I've sat through, uh, multiple hours of team meetings, but our teachers are really coming together, and, um, there are some really good activities out there that they have, that have developed, and it's, it's interesting to see too, is the, the packet that we'll produce for kindergarten, eh, four or five pages, and as it goes up to the third, fourth, and fifth, the fifth grade was forty-six pages. But you're talking about fifth graders who need to read a passage, it might be two pages to answer the question.
And is the packet for a week, is it for a month?
It's, it's for fourteen days, or ten days, I'm sorry, ten days packets is what we're doing now. And now that we are, now that we know that we're shut down, we, we will be able to develop this even a little bit better to move us to the last day of school. And we'll have those packets up to, including the last day of school, available for our kids. And again, they can access them via the computer, or if they don't have that access, we'll make paper available.
I'm trying to visualize what the packet would look like on a secondary level, could you help, help?
Sure, uh, the second grade, I, I just looked at a second grade one, um, and, and if.
Secondary.
Secondary.
Oh, secondary.
High school.
The high school's gonna, uh, they're gonna be, their packets will be. The high school's gonna, uh, they're gonna be, their packets will be, uh, based on content. And so all of the math teachers will get together and come up with a packet that challenges and helps them transition from one grade to the next. It is going to be interesting with AP, uh, and, and again, we haven't had that meeting yet, but they, they've been discussing already. And we had an initial meeting with, with the administrators. And that's a little bit out of my expertise, but it, it's, it, it will be, uh, it won't be as hit and miss as it was the first couple of weeks. It's going to be more consistent and, and more toward the practicing skills, and only those skills needed for the next level. There were some that were given busywork and some that were putting way more on than the kids could even, the teacher needed to be with them. So we're, that's where we are, and that's what we're trying to handle as best as we can.
Mr. King, I'm certain that you can answer this for the people that may be watching the board meeting. I know this because my daughter Bailey has dual credit and advanced placement classes. The statement you made earlier, or that Mr. Mickiff made earlier, that the work the students are doing cannot be counted against them and can only enhance their grades, that isn't true for advanced placement or dual credit. I'm not sure which. I think it's the dual credit, because they have to complete an active curriculum in order to receive that dual credit.
That's true. There is an exception.
So, I mean, just for anyone listening, any children here that have dual credit, now you still have to do the, the, the curriculum that's sent to you for that class in order to get that credit.
That is true.
Is that true for advanced placement as well, or just dual credit?
It's, uh, advanced placement. I don't think it's true for dual credit. I, I think there was already an agreement in place. I may be wrong about which one it is.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure, and that's why I asked. I wasn't, I knew it was one or the other or both.
And I might get a text here from, from somebody out there listening to, to clarify that, because I know the folks are listening, and, and I appreciate that, and that is true.
Well, now, that's something that's easy for you all to find out the answer to, now that you've been asked a question, you can post it on the website.
But you're right, that is one or the other. I'm, I'm afraid to say.
And, and that's the other thing, uh, board members is not, we have a website, and we have a Facebook, a county Facebook page. And we're posting all of this information, all of this information is on, on our social media. So even those, even those students who do not have access, if they're talking to their friends via the telephone, they, they know what's going on out there.
And of course, continuing with remote learning, we're also, we'll be continuing with our meal deliveries each week. We learned today on our phone call that the meal deliveries each week will continue until the last week in your school, in our school calendar. So for us, that'll be up through the first week of June. The waiver that the, uh, state received, um, from, from the federal government to be able to provide these meals is only good through the end of June the thirtieth. There's already questions being asked about, you know, in the summertime, we have, uh, summer feeding sites. It's possible, based upon what I've heard today, is that the state may get another, or, or extend this waiver for the meal deliveries through the summer, and that we would be able to continue to provide meals in, in the very same manner that we're doing now. Now, that, that was just mentioned today briefly. Also, uh, and Mr. Roy had shared this with me and Mr. King a few days ago, state's going to hand out EBT cards, debit cards, for students to be able to purchase based upon the number of days that we have, schools have been closed. And based upon what John Roy gave me, it appears to me that every student in, in our county would be eligible to receive approximately three hundred and seventy-five dollars to purchase with every student. You can, you can opt out as a parent when you receive. They're gonna use the address that's in Weavis, that we have in our, in a Weavis system, to send these EBT cards to parents and to students. And that there will be a media blitz, so, uh, social media, uh, television, radio spots to make sure that parents know that they're coming and what, you know, for what purpose, um, they would be used. But it's approximately, it looks like it's seven dollars a day.
Seven dollars a day, and that's, if, if that child is in need, based on the percentile of where they are in free, reduced area.
It can be anywhere from five,
Five to seven.
Five dollars a day to seven dollars.
But you, what if you aren't on either one of those areas?
It's, it's,
Because we are CEP.
Well, that's something, something, but you're talking about the amount that you receive, would it fluctuate to, you know?
It, it would, yeah.
To some degree. Is that ever counting?
Every count. So this is, this is new information, and then you'll hear more about it. And it's our understanding, based upon what was shared with us today, is that those debit cards or EBT cards will start going out the middle of May. So, and that, and what they'll do is, it'll be like the first, the first, it'll be uploaded with the money the student will receive for meals, uh, in March. And then the next, the next upload into the system would be, uh, for April, and then, and then finally for May, for the remainder of the school year. Try to get Mr. Roy, uh, maybe he can come and talk about this next, uh,
Now, the, the total, the total for March, April, May is, is three hundred and some dollars? Am I reading that right?
That, that's the maximum, around three hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
That's why I had reference to maximum.
That, that a child would receive. This will make a note, drive size, if I can get John to your next, uh, next board meeting. Let's see, do I have, I've got one other thing, one, one more.
Chances are, Mr. Mickiff, if it's a Tuesday afternoon, he'll probably be home, because that's our, that's our food delivery.
Well, maybe Kirk, we can just get some additional information from him.
I'll, I'll make it a note.
About what that's gonna look like. And finally, um, with the election now being moved from May twelfth to June nine, that is going to necessitate a change in our current school calendar. And I, I believe I've placed a, this year's calendar, uh, at your seats. And this is being done in collaboration with the State Department. I've been going back and forth with Amy Riller and Heather Hutchins on our calendar. But here, just to let you know what is going to happen, and this will be on the next board agenda, Susan, we'll need to add this for the board to approve. But the, uh, May, the twelfth election day will now become an OS day. We are going, what we're gonna do is take the OS day that is on June the fourth and move it to May the twelfth. June the fourth will become an out-of-calender day, so it'll be in red. And then, of course, May, or June the ninth then will be the election day. So that'll be on the next board agenda for your approval. Just wanted to give you a heads up. And to get any questions about what we're doing or why we're doing. The bleachers, I have one more. The bleachers, Lincoln, at, uh, Hamlin PKA. Were, the old bleachers were removed last week. Took, I guess it took them all week, uh, to remove. Kind of odd, I walked in the gym the other day, and I walked in without the bleachers there, it just looks, you know, it's enormous. Uh, got some bad news potentially on the installation of the new bleachers. Uh, the company that builds the bleachers is located in Michigan, and everything is shut down in Michigan right now. So we found out last week that there may be a delay in getting the new bleachers. And it could be as late as the first of October before they're installed. So that was bad news. Now, you know, I don't know what Michigan's gonna do, and they may, they may start to fire things back up and everyone goes back to work and we'll be fine, but just wanted you to know that there could be a delay, uh, with bleachers. Good news on the DM floor, I don't know if Ray knows this. Peel back some of the existing floor to look at the subfloor. Mr. Kirk may know this. What they found under there was concrete with one by six oak strips that runs the length of that floor, the width of the floor. I don't know how far apart they're, they're set. Uh, so basically what happened was when that, when that floor was built, new floor, there was, there was concrete, then there was these one by six strips that go across, and I don't know how wide they are. I'm assuming they're, you know, one by, what did I say? One by sixes? I'd said it, didn't I? And then they filled concrete in between each one of those strips. So when Greg first tells me this, he said it's gonna cost us, it, it could cost us sixty thousand dollars to remove that subfloor. I said, what? And he, then he smiled at me, he said, no, he said, actually, he said, this is a good thing. He said, that subfloor is in excellent shape. He said, there are a few areas where we're gonna have to replace some of those one by sixes and maybe put in some concrete in some areas where maybe the, uh, one by sixes are loose, or whatever, he said, shim them up somehow. Long story short, we're gonna save eighteen thousand five hundred dollars on that project, because we're not gonna have to go in there and build that subfloor. So that, that was great news, um, that he shared. And we're still working on, uh, someone asked me earlier, I think before the board meeting, about the sewer treatment plants at, at Midway. We're still working with the SBA. Ray and I talked to Mike Hall today. Mike can, we want to communicate with ZMM. There's some question about who really has responsibility for the, the work, the quality of the work that took place, or the issues that we've seen. So I hope sometime soon to have some, some information for you about what direction we may need, uh, to go.
Does Leslie know about this already?
Leslie's aware. So it may be, you know, we need to get our attorney involved, but don't know that right now. And that's it, except for a request for a legal update to discuss personnel matter. Now, an executive session.
Does anybody have, excuse me, anything else, any questions, comments before we entertain Mr. King's question?
I have a question. I'm not sure if any of the rest of you are aware of this or not, but and, and sometimes you don't look the gift horse in the mouth, but in this situation, I'm just a little curious. If you follow the downward progression of the quality of the boxed lunch materials that we've received, you all wear that. Week one, what you brought in here and showed us was incredible. Week two, it was packets of sandwiches and breakfast bars and some juices and maybe a piece of fruit here or there. Week three, this week, you got three boxes, two for my daughters and one for tears daughter. You know what the main lunch entree was in every one of those boxes? Bologna sandwiches. Yeah, three, now, you know, maybe, you know, three other boxes would have had a better entree, but, um, I assume that the price we're paying now for those boxes, it's the same thing we paid week one, when the quality was much, 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 much better. So maybe it's a functionist supply and demand, uh, but I promise you, if, if John has, has opened a box from week three versus week one, vastly different quality of food.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't have a chance to open any boxes this morning. We were scrambling to, to get the, you know, boxes off the truck. Direct, a direct ship at the last two times from Charlotte, North Carolina. But, uh, no, that's the first time I've heard that. Did, did you already complain today?
Nobody's complaining.
I had, I had heard just the opposite about the first, like, parents, or students that didn't like the first box. I guess maybe it's just people's taste.
Well, I mean, the first box, like you had in here, had, had lasagna and pizza, and had lots of quality individually packaged food items, instructions. Second week's box was a bunch of sandwiches and some, uh, like I said, breakfast bars and maybe a muffin here and there, a couple pieces of really small fruit, and just markedly different, which I understand that there were, at our request, they, they changed somewhat the nature of it to have less packaging. Still come in the same sized box, it's just all loosely thrown in there. And, I mean, how many of us in here didn't grow up eating bologna sandwiches? But,
Still, still do.
If, if we're, uh, you know, if we're paying the same thing for bologna sandwiches that we're paying for lasagna and pizza and all those nice things, we're in week one boxes, then, then to me, that just makes me scratch my head a little bit.
Have you, have you heard from other students or parents?
I have.
You know, that first week, I think I told you that, that I opened and looked in four or five boxes, and every one was different.
They were all great. We went down, you remember, I went down with you after the meeting and looked at a bunch of them, and they were all great.
But I had someone complain to me that, you know, they weren't crazy about those first boxes we sent out, and then the second round was great, you know, now you're telling me that, you know, today's,
Okay, here's, Mr. Roy must be listening.
Okay.
Uh, the boxes have, had the same thing other than what you had to microwave or freeze, and the reason that that was changed was due to the availability of those household items in the majority of our houses. Folks didn't have microwaves, and, or, so that's why that decision was made.
Could you ask him if he could throw some ham sandwich in there next time? Little piece of salami?
If he's listening, I might get an emoji here.
Look to the camera, Roger, right there.
So John, if you're listening, can you ask for some ham, salami, make a little pickle loaf, break up the monotony of bologna every day?
Mr. Roy, I like bologna myself.
I was gonna say, I think our people are accustomed to bologna.
Here comes, thumbs up.
All right, is that, any other, any more comments? Okay, if not, Mr. Mickiff has requested an executive session, uh, for legal update. Uh, what's, do I have a motion?
I'll be.
Okay, Mr. Baker made that motion.
Second.
Second by Mr. Wilkerson. Is that an all yes vote?
Yes.
All yes. At seven oh nine, PM, the board is going into executive session for a legal update.
Request a break.
Okay, table break, Larry. Everybody else, and Sean can go on. Sean, there's office, if you ask, is dancing ceased or are we still dancing?
Ceased. They do a online get-together on Fridays, just, just for spirits, but they're, they're hoping to get back together, hopefully.
I thought maybe you might be a virtual.
My, my mileage has plummeted in my Highlander, so.
This gas, I noticed this morning, like I got my newspaper, but I looked at that, yeah, a little thing across the street there from me, and the price of gas had dropped like thirty, twenty cents overnight.
Dollar thirty-four at, uh, Sam's Club yesterday in Ohio.
I watched the news that said, actually, well, the cost of oil yesterday was below fifteen. And today it was eleven. Well, you know, there was some kind of big agreement where we, Mexico was the holdout, and we agreed to buy all of Mexico's excess oil to replenish our, what are they called, strategic reserves that were depleted during the Obama administration. So that Mexico would agree to, you know, cut their, not cut their production, but sell what they need to sell.